Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice that this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on February 2nd and the Two River Times on February 3rd. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in the Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include the statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please Sandy.
Mr. Borderline?
Here.
Mrs. Bush?
Here.
Mrs. Koch?
Here.
Mr. Noel? Mr. Paolo?
Here.
Mr. Rolfe?
Here.
Mr. Nicka?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Here.
Mr. Burkhart?
Here.
And Mr. Leader?
Here. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. To the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. One nation under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no old business and no new business on the agenda tonight. We have a handful of administrative items. And so with regard to those administrative items, Fred, you want to take us through those items in sequence based on the agenda?
Yes. So our first item is the approval of the minutes from our January 18th, 2022 meeting. Those minutes were distributed prior to the meeting. I'd ask that any board member have any comments they'd like to make here. Otherwise, we'll move to approve those minutes. Okay, no comments. I will, I'll motion to approve the minutes from January 18th, 2022.
Second.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Burkhart?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
Yes.
So the next item on the agenda is the resolution preliminary and final site plan approval for M&amp;M Realty Partners at Fairhaven LLC. And so I think we have some discussion of that resolution, Todd?
Yeah, so Doug, I guess the way that this process normally works is that you prepare the resolution and you circulate it to board members a few days in advance of the meeting. Board members have an opportunity to review it and provide comment. What's a little bit different about this application is that it comes out of an affordable housing settlement. And obviously, it's a material project involving a lot of moving parts. The process that we followed was similar to the normal process, but because of the substance, we've received comments now from a number of different directions. Namely, we've got comments from the engineer and the planner hours. We've got comments from council for the applicant. And then we have some revisions that have been implemented through Doug based on consultation with Affordable Housing Council for the borough. What I'm wondering Doug is whether or not it's possible to do something like a screen share, to put the resolution up, to walk through all the comments that have been made from when this was originally circulated to the board, and then to have discussion as necessary with regard to those comments and try and get it done. The alternative to that, I think, would have to be the incorporation of all comments into the document and give the board an opportunity to review this outside of tonight's meeting. Because some of these comments, we've only just received very recently, and understandably so, it doesn't really matter. And it's no one's fault, there's just a lot of involvement. It's always this way when you have a lot of people touching documents on drafts. So Doug, what do you recommend in terms of proceeding?
Well, let me, let me, let me just correct in terms of the procedure. What usually happens in this instance is I compare draft draft out to applicants' council. And that's usually what's always done. Then when that is done, or at least contemporaneous with that, sometimes some council are very good about getting back in a timely fashion. Sometimes they're not, but eventually I call the question. And if we haven't heard from council, I get it up to the planning board for distribution for members. Sometimes when council comes in late, we'll have some minor revisions. And then we've had some discussions on the resolutions in the past. In this instance, you're right. Chair, we had also consulted with the Affordable Housing Consultant and sent out a version to applicants' council. Applicants' council got back to us, the base meld for me, I think, yesterday. And based upon that, as I said, some of those comments, I thought were acceptable, some of those were not. And prior to responding back to council, I again consulted with the Affordable Housing Consultant, Mike Edwards, just to confirm that I was, I was correct in what my initial assumptions were and sent that out to the applicants' council again, basically saying, not all of your comments were accepted. I prepared what I thought was appropriate based upon the comments from Mr. Edwards with regard to the technical aspects and have not heard back from applicants' council since basically my last instruction to them was, if you have any other concerns, I'll make sure you get a link. You can come on board and discuss those with the board. But I think my resolution now is where it should be. And then in the course, I guess today, receive comments from our planner and our engineer as the other distributed, you know, at this moment. If I had the capability technically to share my screen with all those versions, I'd be more than happy to do that. If not. What I can do is walk through the most recent version that I received from the planner, which has all the versions that went out to the applicants' council and now just our planner who's making a recommendation. I don't know if we can tell if the applicants' councils in the audience or not from Ms. Papa. But my recommendation would be to try to get through what we have. And I don't know if we have technical expertise on your end to share the screen with regard to the planner's comments or the planner's comments, because I think that would be the most recent version, perhaps if Ms. Abel has the ability to do that. And we can walk that through, because I think the last version from planner that contains planner and engineer's comments is the most comprehensive at this point in time.
There's an attendee raising their hand, Irina Elgart.
Okay, she is from applicants' council.
Okay, would you like to bring her in now?
That's up to the board. I don't know how you want to proceed from here, Mr. Chairman.
I'm willing to hear, but I'm not willing to negotiate the resolution on the record with applicants' council. So if Ms. Elgart would like to be heard, we'll go ahead and bring her forward, hear what she has to say on the subject.
I don't know if the planner shared their comments with Ms. Elgart or not.
Elena, did you, did you share?
I did not, I only sent my comments to Doug and the professionals that I copied on my email.
Okay.
Sandy, we're bringing Ms. Elgart forward?
Trying.
While that's happening, Elena, the document that you circulated with your comments, that document is the latest version that included the various back and forth that's already occurred. And so your comments are on top. So if we did bring that document through share screen, that's collective, right? Is that your understanding as well?
That's my understanding. It was whatever resolution was sent to the board today around 11:30 or 12:00 PM today, which I believe was the second resolution that the board received.
Okay.
So Todd, I'd just like to reiterate, I think we're rushing this. I really need more time. I didn't get these comments until 7:25. And I know that you have proposed that we go through them one by one, but sometimes I need a little bit more time than just having someone read them to me.
So, so that's, I'm good with that. In a perfect world, we just go ahead and put it off. We can't seem to bring Ms. Elgart forward to get a reaction from the applicant. Doug, do you have any reason to believe that postponing this, tabling the adoption of this resolution until our next meeting would create a problem for the applicant? Have they communicated that?
I have no basis of knowledge one way or the other, Chairman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they haven't responded. So we don't even know what they're thinking.
My concern would be, we're looking at one document, if we look at Elena's document, and it'll have her comments, her and Rich's comments, I guess, combined and read. But we wouldn't be able to, are we just trusting that everything else in there, everyone is on board with the compromise that has happened to get them there?
What I can represent is that what Elena's comments are, are the comments that I discussed and reviewed with Mike Edwards and sent out to the applicants' council, the invitation to applicants' councils, if you have an issue, come to the board meeting. And then received on top of that Elena's comments. If that has not been sent out to the applicants' council, they haven't seen Elena's comments, which contain her comments and that of our engineer.
Okay, well, look, the board could always supplement or amend its own resolution. And the nature of the comments from council, I reviewed those. And Doug, there were a bunch of things that I would not be inclined to put in our resolution, quantitative assessments and things such as that. And I assume that when that document got turned again, that those things you did not include. We could, we could, for the sake of making progress, pull that up and show everybody what was in there. We could still review what Elena and Rich put together and go through that for the purpose of informing Doug what we think and still not vote on it, but make some progress so that Doug knows what he's doing. If we don't do it tonight, we certainly need to do it next meeting. And we don't normally do this level of review and, you know, line by line analysis as a group. We normally do it independent, once we've collected, you know, the comments and we have a proposed form.
And I would echo that if I could, because council this evening, unless we go through something, I don't have any direction from. I'd like to at least have some direction. And perhaps if we can find a way to get the applicants' council back in, we have any of their concerns that they have, I can certainly understand. Because we haven't seen our planners and engineers' comments, that they had some concerns. But I think you're going to find that of the majority of comments that have now been made by the, by Elaine and Rich, that are now incorporated on top of a document that at least, I think substantially covers what we could do. If there's an issue there, then the only other issue that I'd have to work out was what the applicants' council was. And I'd have to bring that forth to you, but at least I'd have the planning board's position on these matters.
Let's do that. I don't want to waste time, we've wasted a lot so far, spent a lot so far. I'm going to share my screen based on the comments that we got from applicants' council. Doug, the email that I have from you is 4:05 PM on Monday, the 21st. That included a red line and a clean copy of the resolution. Is that the only set of comments you got from applicants' council?
Right, because after I touched it once with them, my response was, back to you, following theirs, this is what I think is appropriate. And if you have any other comments, come to the meeting. I wasn't going to talk and forth.
So we're going one step backwards, Doug. We're not, we're not working from what you've already accepted or rejected. Instead, for the benefit of the board, I'm going to walk through what these changes were, I'm going to put it up. At the end of this, by the way, we can have another discussion about whether people are comfortable voting with the understanding that if people are not comfortable, then we're not voting. So let's just, no one's being pushed into anything. But unless we talk about it, Doug has no additional information for drafting between now and the next meeting. So I'm sharing my screen, I hope it's the right one. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, I can.
So I can see it, and I can represent, Todd, that that is the marked up copy of the resolution from applicants' council back to receiving any comments from our planner and engineer. And prior to my final version back to the applicant. But I can walk through what changes I agreed to accept on this document and what changes I said we were not accepting.
Okay, so let's do it this way. Doug, you and I are going to have a dialogue, and I'm going to ask any board member that has any comments or any problems to jump in and interrupt. I can no longer see the Hollywood squares, I'm just focused on the document, and I'm just going to walk it through with Doug so that everybody gets what's going on. Doug, what I just highlighted is in the preamble and basically confirms that they own the property and the other changes are non-substantive. Any objection to these changes?
My changes were just language changes because it didn't read properly with regard to how you identified it, but no substantive changes. They're the owner and we're identifying the property.
Very good. The next provision which was revised was to add this two-bedroom qualifier.
And I spoke with Mike Edwards. Mike Edwards said, got no problem with that, Doug. And so that carried forward in the version that was presented that the planner worked off of.
Good, and with Mike signing off on it, Mike is familiar with the settlement. I would be comfortable with that. Here, there's a change for where he defined M&amp;M, that's not substantive. What about the changes I just highlighted there, Doug?
Over pages as I can. I did not like, and did not agree to in my version. What we did with number two was we agreed that they were the owner of the property. I did not agree to adding in their redlined number three, which was the qualifications and testimony of the applicant's planner, traffic engineer, engineer and architect were accepted and found to be credible. I did not agree to that clause, and I can explain to that. I have no problem explaining to you on the record and in public. While we certainly agreed to the qualifications, in the body of this document, we've already identified as to who was testifying. And while we did accept the qualifications, there's no formal determinations as to credibility. And I did not, and I didn't think that that was appropriate because later in the body of this, I took exception to something that was opined by one of their council, by one of their professionals. And I thought that this would be binding the board if we'd agree to that. We simply jumped over there, number three, and went to the number three that we already had. Before.
I agree. Excuse me, go ahead. I agree completely, the three was inappropriate. Does anybody, this was substantive. Does anybody have a problem with not including this proposed addition? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. Now into paragraph four, I'm just going to highlight it just to make sure. Yes?
Hello, I'm sorry, this is Irina Elgart. I finally was able to log in. I think somebody put me on as a panelist. I'm counsel for M&amp;M here. So I just, the only, I put that in in terms of the credibility findings. And if you don't find it, it's appropriate, that's fine. I just put it in there because according to case law, there should be some findings with regard to the testimony, whether it's credible or not. And if there's anything that's objectionable that might have been put in an opinion of one of the experts that obviously the board disagrees, of course, it should be taken out. I put in the credibility findings just because out of normal course, I normally put in credibility findings, especially when, if you're finding, if you're relying on that testimony.
All right, so Ms. Elgart, we're going to defer to the, to the recommendations of council with regard to some of these issues, certainly.
Understood.
With regard to any legal requirements related to what needs to be found in our resolution. You originally raised your hand, and then we were talking about inquiring with you with regard to any hardship that might result from not being able to proceed with the adoption of a resolution tonight. Did you have an initial comment that you needed to share with us or any reaction to the potential for us not proceeding with a vote on the reso tonight?
I would appreciate a vote on the reso tonight. And I'm sorry if I missed some of it. I was trying to, you know, log in somehow, raise my hands. And as I was playing around with my phone, I think I missed some of the meeting, so I apologize about that.
That's okay. Did you have anything further before we put you back in the gallery?
I just didn't know if you wanted me to stay on as a panelist as you're going through, if you want me to, you know, explain any of the changes that we were suggesting. I don't know if this is what you're looking at, is our changes or if this is somebody, or if this was on the screen now, it happens to be the planner's or the engineer's changes.
What's on, what's on the screen now, where the back, where the comments you sent to me?
Okay, gotcha.
That's what I know at this point. And no, I don't want to have you be on with us as we go through it, but I appreciate the offer.
Okay, so if need be, I'll raise my hand, thank you, appreciate you listening.
With regard to these comments that were made in item number three, page, what I think is page four, they were carried forward. We did not, I spoke with Mike Edwards on those, I felt those were specific to the settlement agreement. And in speaking with Mike Edwards, we didn't have any problem with those comments.
Yeah, I'm certainly okay with it if Mike signed off on it. And I assume that the comments with regard to the size of the units is consistent with the plans. Okay.
The only other comment is you went down on that page on number eight. This was the comment, I didn't think anybody was trying to be fast and loose, but I was concerned in light of the earlier comment if we accepted that. Because here, as you know, this was a, this was a particular issue that the board had gone around and around on with regard to the ingress from River Road. And while the applicant's traffic engineer may have said it could function, I thought that our paragraph eight was where the board was on this and that the added language was not something that the board would make as a finding of fact. Realize that this is the board's findings of fact. I didn't think that that was what the board's conclusion or finding of fact. Notwithstanding credibility, notwithstanding qualifications, even if you find a witness is credible, you don't have to accept all of their conclusions. And I think this was one that I was concerned that if we were to make that as a finding of fact, it might minimize our position, which had been very strongly placed on the record of the applicant, that if that ingress driveway wasn't coming back, we were expected to see this. And I was concerned about an opinion being presented there that circulation would function properly regardless of whether the waiver was granted. So I had told applicant back that I basically had struck that language and left our eight as the way it appears in the dark language and did not accept the highlighted or red language.
I agree with that, this should have been rejected, anybody disagree with that? Okay.
Oh, but I have a question, where it says property, would function property regardless? Is that supposed to say function properly?
Well, it doesn't matter because it's coming out, but I think it does mean properly.
Okay.
Yeah, as to the next page, as to the first one under number 12, putting in the architect's planner, it did clarify, I had no objection to that. I didn't think that was substantive, because what we're talking about there is the objective test that we were going to use, and it was going to be the applicant's planner and our, and the board's engineer would confer and agree. And this is on that signage as to whether or not it would be visible lower and wider as opposed to higher and thinner. So I didn't have any objections to that, and that language found its way into the version that I presented to the board.
But is this only Doug going to give the board's engineer and their professionals? I mean, I would want our planner to be involved in that discussion.
I, we can certainly modify that to put our planner in too, but my understanding of what the board, and again, my understanding is incorrect, your recollection governs. My understanding was we were leaving it to their planner and our engineer to decide on whether that sign met the if possible test. But if you want our planner involved, you know, we can certainly, I don't know, we can wait to hear from applicants' council, if that, the applicant's planner, our planner and the board's engineer.
I think that, I think that Rich is certainly capable, but I think that the, I, what I recall was that it was their professionals speak to our professionals about what works. And I would have included our planner in that. I don't know what expertise may be required, but it's material. So I would see no reason to exclude our planner from that discussion.
We'll make a modification if that gets included, let me just go along and.
Okay. But, but, but Doug, at the same time, I don't intend for that to be an assessment that we're making only. It's an assessment that we're making in consultation with them, so I think.
You know, notwithstanding that, there's no reason why Rich wouldn't consult with our planner, but I hear your direction.
Okay.
Number 13, we changed that language. Because I, there were two things that were going on, and I didn't, I didn't believe that this language clearly reflected what the board wanted to accomplish. Because as you read the darkened language, the, that was what was in my original resolution, the red language, what was added, what I ultimately put back in was language that said to the effect that going to the sort of last full line, lights shall be designed to work on a timer and/or similar device in order to be turned off at night except for safety. I, my understanding from what the board's finding was that it wasn't just to reduce spillage, that if and only if there was a need for safety, were those lights to be on, they were otherwise, they were to be on a timer. And the way I read applicants' councils' language was, they'd be on a timer in order to reduce spillage. We wanted them off. That was what I thought was, was what the board's direction was, unless there was a safety need. So we, we took a little bit of theirs and we modified ours to say that, really, just in order to be turned off. Put it on timer somewhere as to where you turned off except for safety needs.
I agree. The long pauses are for anyone else's comments, whether I'm soliciting them or not. The pause is a solicitation. Definitely River Road. 16?
16. I'm 16. Let me see what we did with 16.
I can read it to you. Oh, you can look at it.
Todd, do we even need to air that one? That's.
I don't. I think we rejected that because we had early on said in the in number two, if you will, that the application was conforming. It did not need variance wave and or variance or waiver relief. If you take a look at our second. Excuse me.
Did the board find that the development was consistent with the Affordable Housing District Design Standards? Do we find that at some point? I mean, that was in the settlement, but that was not.
I believe I believe we did. But I think the way in which we phrase it, I'm trying to find that now. It was in our whereas clause.
So the truth of the matter is, the board doesn't make this determination. The board relies on its professionals to tell them. And we certainly agree that there were no variances that were triggered that we were aware of. But broadly saying that it's entirely consistent with the development ordinance is is nothing I think we've opined on. But when you look at it.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Doug.
Those ordinance also include some design standards where we were making changes to design standards. I simply rather than go as far as that language did, if you took a look at our whereas clause on the second page, 1234. Where I simply put in whereas a review of the applicant's proposed site development by the borough planner and engineer reviews that reveals the application presented and amended conforms to the AH designing district zoning requirements without the need for variance or design waivers. And in the earlier and an earlier provision, we found that it was consistent with the with the summit provisions. I didn't see the need to reiterate that in paragraph 16 as a finding.
Yeah, because the board didn't find it. And is it? But you also covered the the design standards for the Affordable Housing District. I like where you put it and how it was stated. Do we need the balance of 16 or should this all come out?
The balance of 16, we did not accept. And simply just relied upon our earlier whereas clause is this did not agree to that.
You'll also see in the comments we sent Elena and myself, we reworded that that number.
Yes, and I and rather, and I agree, Rich, and I when we get there, if we get to another layer.
Right.
You're going to hear that I'm not going to have. I'm just trying to keep us from having too many pieces on the board right now.
We're going to do that next, Rich. We're going to. We're going to turn the pages with that one the same way. So Doug knows what we want to do with it.
Understood.
All right, I'm now in G. Yes, 16. We simply did not accept that. We left that the board finds that the development of the site is consistent with the Affordable Housing District standards. We didn't. We didn't. Excuse me. We didn't find what they were asking us to to do. When we get to paragraph G. I had some certificate difficulties with that, because at least in speaking with Mr. Edwards. The final language that we proposed was that the applicant shall pay the payment in lieu of construction of the third unit at the time of the issuance of building permits. And then put in no certificates of occupancy will be issued until proof is furnished. And as Mike Edwards and I spoke, you know, there can be a significant gap in time between the issue of a building permit, which will generally happen at the beginning of your project as opposed to a certificate of occupancy, which occurs at the end of your project. And my only concern at that point and with that language. And I specifically asked Mr. Edwards on this. I said, what does the settlement and amended settlement agreement say as to the timing of that? What Mr. Edwards confirmed to me is that the payment would be made. You know, at the time of the issuance of, you know, temporary is with the issuance of building permits.
So Doug, I think this is actually a very important issue because you know, if they can avoid paying this for a year, then that's a significant amount of money that isn't out of pocket. My concern would be that no certificates of occupancy issued until proof is furnished means that the hammer isn't actually applicable for a year off. Shouldn't it say that no building permit should be issued until the payment is made?
Well, what they're saying is the payment in lieu of the construction of third unit at the time of the issuance of the building permits, they have to have building permit and payment are made at the same time. That's what Mr. Edward tells me the language of the settlement is.
Right. But the second piece of it, the idea that no certificates of occupancy will be issued until proof is first that it's paid.
Well, the way I read that, the way I read the provision, the way Mr. Edwards explained it to me, you're not getting a building permit unless the payment's made. Now, when proof comes to the planning board, I agree, it's a different issue. I went with Mr. Edwards on his language on that on that document.
Well, I would recommend that it say that no building permits or certificate of occupancy certificates of occupancy will be issued until proof is furnished. I think there's there's a way to interpret this to suggest, yes, it should be paid. But that the end result is that no COs. But I would eventually defer to Mike once he heard my thought.
I I mean, we can. We can make sure the language is quoted by chapter and verse.
It's not going to say this, I don't think. It's going to talk about.
It's yeah, it probably is not going to because I think if it were, Mike would have told me otherwise.
Right. And I don't, by the way, I don't think my change is inconsistent with the idea that it should be paid prior to pulling building permits. I'm not proposing to change anything other than making it clear that they that they shouldn't be issued unless it's paid.
And I as as to those, I didn't think it was while I don't, while I'm pretty good at what I do. I didn't know how anyone would vote on this. And I didn't know. Well, even even if you agreed with the memorandum of agreement, you might abstain, or you might have different thoughts.
Right.
Changes in the exhibit list. To my way of thinking. None, not not even to my way of thinking. There were no changes in the exhibit list. There was some, I think there was only one other minor modification that we didn't talk about, which was regard to semicolons and commas.
I skipped it.
Burden ourselves with that.
Yeah, I used executive discretion and skipped it. So let's move on to Elena and Rich. Let's move on to your comments. Would you guys like to share your own screen and work with Doug and walk the board through your comments? Or do you want me to do it in the way I just did it? And and do it for you?
I think you could do it the way you just did it, then you can highlight it, and we could chime in.
Okay, so then I'm going to close this. You can all see what my emails are today. Elena, you sent it 427. Is this it?
I believe so. I only sent it once.
Okay, very good. That's today, 427. We're going to open it. Can everyone see that?
Mm hmm.
Yes.
Okay, Elena, let's you you walk me through it. Rich jump in as needed. I'll kind of run the document. Clarifying the name of the owner.
Correct. And so so I just wanted to point out that that's the lot area before the right of way dedication. And that after the dedication, it's going to be smaller. And so I was just I had a question about whether or not the right of way dedication should somehow be incorporated into the resolution.
Doug, can you react live?
Didn't have that fact. And I don't know that the board considered it. What is the impact of putting that number in Lane as on the 29893? As opposed a net from the right of way.
It reduces the lot area and all of the calculations submitted in their bulk chart, including the habitable floor area ratio was taken off of the proposed lot area as opposed to the existing lot area that includes a portion of the Cedar Avenue right away.
Is that how it was done in the planning documents?
Correct.
Uh huh. Maybe we just put both sentences in.
Yes.
And I.
No reason not to put the clarification in, especially because that's.
It doesn't hurt to put the clarification in. And and I can just add that as, you know, the tract is 29,893 square feet, proposed use for the applicant's permitted use. Lot area before the right of way dedicate, you know, I'll fashion that language to include the 28,152 square feet after the R O W dedication.
Very good. Long pauses are for people to jump in. Board planner or Doug or engineer.
It begs the question, Rich, what are you? Are you the board or the borough's planner?
I'm an engineer, actually. I am a planner.
Sorry, sorry, Elaine, rather. Excuse me. Thank you. Good touche.
Right. Yes, I just wanted to clarify. That is the Richard and I wanted to clarify that, you know, it's the board planner and the board engineer, the board professionals reviewed the application.
Okay.
And then this other.
Resolutions I've ever made that distinction one way or the other. I've just made it, you know, planner. This I hope you take no offense.
None.
Very good. No problem.
And then we just had a question on the the final verbiage of this sentence where it says and presentation from members of the public.
Well, some people actually gave us documents, which is why instead of just comments. We in some instances, we marked documents, which is why I use the word presentation versus comments. People, a lot of people had con everybody that made a presentation had a comment. Not everybody that had a comment had a presentation, but we had pictures from the next door neighbor. We had Ariel. We had other pictures from other individuals. I think Mr. Lawrence. Yeah, Lawrence Fennell gave us some documents with regard to exhibits of examples of things, which is why I use the word presentation.
And then the last question was, do we need to spell out those members since they are reflected in the minutes? In the resolution here. I mean.
You jump. Are you jumping ahead to something or?
No, it says from members of the public. And then they you list the four members of the public.
Right.
We just had a question if it's necessary to name those individuals.
I always do. We've always identified them in all of your resolutions as to people who made presentations or comments.
Okay.
It also explains the markings when you get back into the exhibit list because the markings from Bill Toronto are given his initials. If you go into the.
Okay.
Do we know?
It looks like you spelled Lawrence wrong.
Yeah, I was going to say it with a joke, but yeah.
L A W R E N C E. I just Googled it.
Good, Doug.
Certainly don't want to misspell his name.
As long as it wasn't on purpose. Okay. Capture all of this.
Sure. So we were just trying to clarify exactly what was being provided in terms of the affordable units since the 20% set aside of 14, I think, is like 2.8 rounded up to three instead of including the 20% set aside because in some ways mathematically, they're not. They're providing two affordable family rental units plus a payment in lieu. And then I just wanted to clarify by incorporating into the executed settlement agreement into the resolution as well.
Yeah, my only concern is I did not run that past our affordable housing person. And that's all I'd want to do. If you I think I think if it's if it's if it's sort of our side that's arguing about that, we'll find a resolution.
I would agree.
And I think we just want a clarification that anyone reading this resolution understands that it's actually three units in total, two of which will be provided on site. And then the one additional with the in lieu of. Because we do mention the word third in the resolution, I think, on the last page in the conditions.
Yes.
So that's why we had added in lieu of one additional affordable unit that were additional.
Again, you're not. You're not getting a fight for me. I would certainly recommend it as long as I can run that by our Affordable Housing Council. He has no problem.
Okay.
That takes me down here to paragraph four, a couple of comments, the margins and some that's all comments on market.
Sure. So the maximum building coverage in the zone is 45% and the applicant is proposing proposing 41.31. And then the maximum habitable floor area ratio is 0.95 and the applicant's proposing 0.92. I just wanted to clarify that those numbers are what the applicant's proposing and not what is permitted in the zone. Because the way it can be interpreted is that that's what the ordinance permits rather than what's being proposed.
My notes reveal we corrected that on the record with the applicant when the hearing was conducted with you guys there. I'm not sure I understand.
Now, the way it reads, it says maximum building coverage 41.31. That's what's proposed. The maximum building coverage allowed is 45%. So I guess what we're proposing is to add.
Can you add that for the clarification?
The clarification numbers based on what's permitted for that zone district. Elena, that's what we were after, right?
Exactly.
Well, and just to clarify, so while 45 may be permitted, 41.31 was proposed and nothing more than 41.31 can be built because the approval is conditioned on the specific plans that were presented, correct?
That's my understanding correct, and that's what they're proposing.
Yeah, I just I want Doug to confirm.
And yes.
Okay. Okay.
And now for the trash enclosure, the detail on the submitted site plan show that it's not a fenced in trash enclosure. It's actually a six foot brick facing to match building trash enclosure with and they provide a testimony that they will add a decorative gate. And that, you know, it's not a fence.
So you've got a brick on three sides matching the building fence not shown on the plans to be added, subject to discussion and approval of the board's professionals, right?
I think it's the gate is subject to approval of the board professionals, but the enclosure aside from the gate is a six foot brick facing trash dumpster enclosure rather than just a fence or a fenced.
Got it, Doug?
I didn't have that testimony in my notes.
Yeah, I just to clarify, I think that's what's shown on the plans. I think we focused on the gate. I don't remember discussing what the balance of the enclosure was. Maybe we did. Okay, we're on to nine.
The nine. So this was something that I had included in one of my planning reports about the electric vehicle make ready, ready charging stations. That's now a state law. So I just included the law and the DCA model electric vehicle ordinance, and I added a second ordinance by accident. So it should be DCA model electric vehicle ordinance. Just for clarification on as to because there's regulations about how many to add based upon how many parking spaces you provide based upon whether it's a parking lot or if it's a mixed use development or residential. There's all kinds of standards included within the model ordinance.
Yeah, we felt we needed to tie this to something so we can double check that number. And and point to something.
Question is, are you telling me that as written, that is correct, or as written, you have an additional ordinance?
That comes out. I think that.
Exactly. That's correct.
Yes.
You got it, Doug?
No.
This this ordinance, the second use of.
The DC model ordinance comes out. The D C model ordinance comes out.
No.
Just word ordinance.
Okay, gotcha. Very good. Now I've got it.
This is just a clarification. Again, um, testimony was provided during the hearing that there would be three commercial tenants and the residential component. So instead of having four spots for commercial tenants when referring to the monument sign, just to have four spots for tenants. To clarify that.
Well, this pass on the sign are for the commercial tenants, are they not?
Three commercial, one residential, four total.
Okay. I think we should clarify three commercial. One tenant.
Do this one first, Lynn?
Sure. So this one is just that, um, there is testimony provided that the monument sign would be located outside of the Monmouth County right of way easement. And I just wanted to, um, raise whether that should be incorporated into this condition or whether it should be its own separate one.
What, what did the board decide on that? I mean, I.
It was noted that it was over the line. They said it was there in error and that they were going to move it back.
No worries, no worries. We'll take care of it.
Hopefully it's a non-issue because they change it and go with the lower, but if they don't, it would be significant. For Borough, we don't need to do that again, right?
Right.
Right.
And so this is another clarification comment about, um, talking about the architectural plans, um, that the materials will be earth tones in color and consists of materials as shown on the architectural plans. Um, because there's more than just hardy board and brick and the architectural plans include all the materials for each type of material used on the facade. So I just wanted to reference the architectural plans rather than, there was a bit with the application rather than regurgitating all those different materials. And then same with the consistent materials will be used for all sides.
I'm just curious. I I know Doug, it was on a list that I'd circulated, but did we pick up in here? The, uh, the trim going around to the east side matching.
I think we do talk about that.
Okay, very good.
Heard it around here.
Yeah, I think it's allowed. Yes.
Onto the first bullet.
Sure. So this one is that, um, the affordable housing ordinance has its own way of measuring building height that's separate from, um, how other properties in the borough measure building height and it's one of the pieces is that, you know, the height of the building from the curb is to be taken into consideration, but instead of regurgitating what the ordinance says, I'm just clarifying it by referring to the ordinance.
You know, Lena, just to avoid a mistake, since it is different. Does it make sense to say specific, I mean, I I don't know, I don't know how much, would it create potential confusion by directing them to the affordable housing? Provisions?
We can direct them in accordance with, um, the affordable housing zone ordinance provisions.
It it's super material. I mean, a an extra foot here would really matter and I think that the affordable housing is tighter than the standard.
Right, yeah, we can, um, instead of with borough ordinance provisions, change it to with affordable housing zone provisions.
I I think that would be better. Eliminates any potential for misunderstanding.
That's fine. I agree.
All right, we've all learned at Cedar Avenue, not Cedar Road.
And so.
Or some people already knew it.
I didn't.
And so, um, this next comment about the east side elevation improvements, it refers to the elevator shaft and I believe the the with the east side elevation is referring to the elevation, the side elevation adjacent to the existing residential property. Um, and it actually has a stairwell and not an elevator on that side. This elevators on the Cedar Avenue side of the building.
Was that cornice extended to the shaft or was it extended beyond the shaft to where, to the backside of the shaft? Does anybody remember that?
I think it was extended to the, to the rear of the building.
I like around that shaft.
Like all the way, yeah. Frontage on Cedar Ave.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on Cedar here?
Says Cedar Ave improvements, additional windows on the elevator shaft and extend corners all the way around the entirety of the side facing Cedar.
Well, hold on, that that's true. That's true in this bullet, the second bullet. It was Cedar the whole way. That's correct. I was on the east side where the next comment was, this one, I think it stops, but I don't know if it stops before or after the, um, the extension for that stair shaft. It was based on how deep it went. Thank you, Lena. I see you're pulling the plans out.
Yeah, trying to get there as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and there's that language confirming the trend that we talked about.
Right. So the east side elevation, the cornice is not extended all the way across on the plans.
No, they, yes, but they agreed to extend it to a point. The question's whether or not it's to where the elevator sh- or the stair shaft starts. Or to where the stair shaft ends and it then goes into like the back of the building that wasn't visible.
It might have been extended to the elevator shaft, but on that side, it's the stairwell, not an elevator.
Right.
That was my only. Um, what that was meaning by that.
No, I understand. I'm I'm focusing on this because this was, this was something I spotted that was important to me. Um, the, the way the plans show it on the east elevation, where does that cornice end right now?
Right now, it ends to the stairwell, before the stairwell.
Right, then it's clearly going to go beyond the stairwell because they agreed to add.
Right.
Doug, there's another break in the elevation when it goes to the back of the building. So it goes beyond the stairwell and picks up that area and extends another, I don't know, it's ten feet or something. Okay, thank you. Uh, River Road, Cedar Avenue, board planner. Uh, this bullet?
So I had reviewed my notes and they had mentioned a safety fence or a guide rail be installed. So I was just adding that for, um, clarification.
I I think where they end up clarifying, and again, I they had, we had originally had safety fence and then I think what they were also talking about was breaks in the safety fence. I didn't envision a guard rail having a break in it. Is your recollection different from, and I think that was covered in the notes?
You know what? I asked them that question.
Yeah.
About how people would get from their cars through that fencing or whatever it is that they put up to the, to the sidewalk that would lead them either to the stairwell or the elevator. And, uh, they said there would be breaks.
Right.
Safety fencing.
They definitely did. The, the question is what material? We talked about what ballisters, ballisters. And they talked about something different than that. We just want to make sure we're not asking for something they didn't commit to.
Yeah, they were clearly removing the ballards. They said they have a lower level fence and and I guess I'm questioning the guide rail.
I have had found from my notes from that meaning safety fence slash guide rail. So it's, you know, it's eve- either or, um, it's not committing them. The intent wasn't to commit them to a guide rail if they were going to do a safety fence.
And then, but in any events, no matter what was there, they were going to be, as in the light of what Councilman Cox said, the balance of that says with openings for people to walk from vehicles up to the pedestrian path.
Uh, question. Good, Roger. Safety fence guard rail is the difference. Uh, a safety fence is stronger, so presumably could prevent a vehicle. Uh, and a guard rail is more decorative. Is that, is that what the difference is or is there not a difference?
No, not, not from my point of view and I'll let Miss Gable respond. From my point of view, I didn't have a guard rail. I had safety fence. So, I mean, I whatever it was, we were just going to make sure that rather than have vehicles bang up against a bollard, there's going to be something softer than a bollard. Individuals as they walk the pedestrian wall.
Right, I'm not, I'm not really, I haven't seen any details or information about what the exact item is, whether it's going to be a safety fence or a guide rail, um, it's was more or less just to provide addition, like some flexibility there. Because I'm not, I don't, I don't know what exactly the make and model or what the when it's going to be. That detail.
Spec or a.
Exactly.
Doug, so you're going to send this to council, uh, to the extent we don't adopt it tonight. And so they'll get a chance to see it as a red line and and they can comment. I, there's no reason not to add it and if they object to it, then we can revisit it.
I think it gives them more choices.
Right.
If our, if our professionals are happy with it, that's fine.
Next bullet.
I'll let Rich take a wheel on this one.
Yeah, so this comment has to do with if the applicant was able to move that access driveway coming off a river road to the west, which means it would move closer to the building. It would actually allow for additional space between the neighboring residential property at that property line and the edge of either the curb or the pavement of that access road. Or access, access driveway. And the way it's worded is we're saying we want more landscaping in that area. And I think that's what the board was after because if you move the driveway over closer to the building, it'll allow you an additional space for some more buffering and some landscaping. So we just, we changed the word more to additional landscaping. Um, and it, the way it reads is additional landscaping will be installed by the applicant. Um, the wording to bolster the visual separation between the adjoining property, um. That's somewhat of an opinion. So I think just from a factual standpoint, we're, we're installing additional landscaping. Obviously it will bolster the visual separation. Um, and the other thing is I don't typically like to consult with neighbors or um, adjacent property owners, the way this is worded. It says, resolution of this issue to be worked through the borough professionals in consultation with the neighbor to the east side of the site. I would rather have, if that additional space becomes available, the applicant indicates additional landscaping on the plan, the plan gets circulated to the board professionals, we take a look at it, make recommendations and ultimately sign off on it. Rather than get a third party neighbor or property owner involved. Because the question two becomes what's additional landscaping? Is that one tree? Is that ten trees? Is that low lying plants? Is that deciduous trees? Rather than, uh, trying to negotiate that item. So that was the clarification we were asking for. And then as it relates to the preservation of the, the existing tree um, or or plantings along that, that area. Um, the borough now has, now has a certified tree expert instead of the, the word, uh, arborist. And and then the, so that, that pertains to that comment and then we can jump to the, um, the donation of those trees next. So I don't know if Doug, if you had any comments on that.
Yeah, I, in terms, in terms of, in terms of cleaning it up as opposed to additional, as opposed to more installed by the applicant, I don't have any problem. Bolster the visual separation. It, I agree, it's an opinion. I think that that's how the board had characterized it and certainly in, and certainly with the professionals' recommendation, but I believe the, the planning board had and and again, I I don't want to use the word committed, but had, that based upon the representations or at least presentation made by the neighbor, we were inviting his comments and it is a consultation. It is not a negotiation. It is not a, it is not a bound by, but I'll leave that to the board. Um, this was Mr. This was Neil.
Toretto.
Toretto's, Toretto's comments, uh, my view is that the board had made that, that he, he would be at least consulted with with regard to that. I'll, I'll abide by the will of the board with that, and I I certainly hear what Rich is saying.
I, I also hear what Rich is saying, um, you know, involving a third party often complicates things, but, um, you know, Mr. Toretto was, uh, very specific in kind of his concerns and he, you know, kind of itemized all the different trees and, uh, screening that is currently there. So I, I do believe he he, he cares deeply about this. And so I think it might be, I don't know, I'd be curious what the board thinks. Um, but it might be worth, uh, including him in the process somehow.
But he should be included either way. I, I think the risk is that if you specifically reference it within the resolution, that there could be some dispute with regard to the amount of input that he, that he should be having. I think it's cleaner um, to allow Rich to deal with it, knowing that it's the board's intent that he be consulted. Uh, I, if the board feels strongly because he, he was strongly in heavily involved in the discussion, I think it's fine either way. I just, I understand what's, what's being requested.
Yeah, and normally we handle that. Um, obviously early on in this process, but also during construction. You know, sometimes things look a little different when you start placing plants and trees and things of that nature on the site. We talk to the neighbor, the developers there, you know, we work things out in that manner. And I think there was, if I recall, there may have been comments where he was concerned about even pulling out of his driveway. Um, as it relates to the, the proximity of this landscaped area and the new driveway. So and once again, this is, this is, if this is a possibility, the, the applicant's professionals, I guess we're going to go back and see if they can push that driveway a little further to the west. And then we're just giving ourselves protection to say, listen, if so, let's do it, let's do some additional landscaping. The, my point is, what happens sometimes if we do word it in the manner it was, then the borough becomes somewhat in the middle and we kind of have to referee this thing with the applicant and the neighbor. And sometimes that's, not everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, I, I refer you on what, what has happened in the past and the best way to word this, but you know, I think I thought Mr. Toretto's, uh, you know, testimony was, was compelling, I thought. So.
Any other board members have any comment on this?
I, I, uh, there must, there must be some way to word that in, in a way that accomplishes what, what we're trying to do. I think we all understand what we're try- trying to do, but Todd, I tend to agree with you in the sense that we put some you, you, you know, the, the residence name in, in the agreement as somebody that is effectively signing off or, or has some authority. I, it might be problematic. I there, there's got to be a way to, to do it that accomplishes the, uh, the spirit of what we're trying to do.
I, I think what Doug wrote is consistent with what we talked about at the meeting. Let's start there. I also think the consultation with the neighbor doesn't mean that the neighbor gets the ability to dictate what happens. Nevertheless, people sometimes, you know, you know, read things into things. So I think Rich's point is, I'm going to consult with them regardless, but let's not have language that confuses who's got the authority to make. But let's not have language that confuses who's got the authority to make the final call.
Good, I've got my direction. All right, I'm glad we have a certified tree expert.
All right, let's go to Dave, pay all those trees.
Yeah, this comment had to do with, and I'm assuming we're asking for deciduous trees. Okay, and four inch caliper.
Yeah, and in speaking with our certified tree expert, he, he suggested that we be very precise at the, in the terminology here, and, and actually say, you know, instead of saying breast height, you say breast height, but at 54 inches above grade. Because I believe Mr. Brooks will tell you that's the industry standard. So being precise about 54 inches above grade is the definition of breast height.
And then we just wanted to add clarification that the applicant shall coordinate species selection and location of planting the replacement trees through the Borough Engineer, which is me, and Shade Tree Commission. You guys are a commission, right? Not a committee?
Correct.
And just make it clear that they're not just donating trees, bringing a truck over to Public Works and dropping them off and say, here we go. We want them to coordinate the species selection and actually plant those trees.
Correct.
I'll be, you know, for the Borough.
I, I actually think that, that that was, that was the spirit of what we discussed.
I agree. I just thought it was, you know, just clean it up a bit, just to spell it out.
It's great. This is great.
There's something like that, that might be the last thing they do, which could be two years from now. And then, you know, we have to fall back on this document.
Yeah, this is a little bit of a preview of what's being discussed for the new tree ordinance in town regarding tree removals based on construction projects. And then how can we, as a town, work with applicants to, you know, if you take a, a, a healthy tree out, you got to replace it somewhere. It doesn't necessarily have to be on that property, but this is a bit of a preview of that language for the tree ordinance that's coming, so.
Okay. And then, yeah, Elena on this one, and Doug, this is what I was referring to for number 16.
Is he asking for site plan approval?
So Elena, do you want to take this comment, number 16?
Yeah, I can take this one. So it's just kind of, we don't know what the exact uses are going to be of the commercial component of the project. So to say that.
It's a mixed, it's a mixed residential, commercial use. I mean, you're not going to get an argument on me, for me, I mean, but I mean, in terms of what they're proposing, it's not only the structure, but it's the proposed use. And the use in this instance is mixed residential, commercial on the first floor. If, if.
But isn't, isn't, isn't Elena identifying that the actual users of the three commercial spaces have yet to be identified? Isn't that the point?
Right.
That was our point, yeah.
Okay. Well then, you know, then that could be that the development consisting of mixed residential and commercial uses. I mean, is that what the holdup is? Or because we, what we're granting is site plan approval for the development of a mixed residential, commercial use.
We just don't want to have any confusion when someone reads this and it says, and the proposed use of the site. Yes, the proposed use of the site is commercial residential, which is mixed use. But we don't know the specific uses for those commercial spaces at this time.
Are you suggesting that if they came in with an impermissible use, this resolution would be used to allow them to put it in?
No.
All right.
No, we're, and I think Todd, you, you hit upon it when you said a comment a few minutes ago. We're we're just we're just stating that site plan approval was granted. But we don't, we were just hung up on the, and the proposed use of the site. That's, that's what we were hung up on, that, that language. This is being incorporated differently.
Just, just for the sake of anyone that doesn't do this all day long, and, and I do, and a handful of you do, this is what happens when you look at a document for a really long time and think about it for a really long time. The words start to mean different things and you get focused on making sure it's precise. More precision is better. So Doug, just think about it and we'll get it tuned in. I think it's a valuable comment. We've got another one here within E.
Rich, do you want to take this one?
Um, yeah, this is where and once again, this is our typical condition of approval. And then it says inclusion of placement, you know, replacement of sidewalks, driveways, curb cuts, drainage, et cetera. We thought we should incorporate, the applicant during the testimony did agree to some of the comments I made in my review letter as it related to the active transportation plan. I don't have that specifically in front of me right now.
It is a requirement of the Affordable Housing Ordinance too. I believe it's a design standard.
This was the comment where it was some of this, some of the improvements in River Road, and then I had made a recommendation about doing some work on the Crowser side, and they said, we don't own it, but then they agreed to a portion of that work. I could probably.
That's something we're going to require them to bond for.
Um, if it's in the county right of way, it's not bonded. There's no performance guarantee on the municipal side.
So does it belong there?
I guess to our point, we just.
Identifying those things that we want them to place bonds for sidewalks, driveway areas, paracaths, all improvements of a similar kind. If you're telling me that we would bond for the active transportation improvements, sure, it can go in there. There's no problem.
Yeah. I guess our point is, we just want to capture that the applicant agreed to install some components of that active transportation plan and make sure that's part of the conditions of this approval.
Under E, but if it should be, I, I, I think it should probably be worked into the resolution somewhere.
That was like, I believe it was like high visibility striping at the crosswalks, things of that nature. And I don't believe those changes were shown on any of their plans.
Should it, should it go in as another bullet point under number 15?
Up top.
Developmental part of the board comments, recommendations confirmed by the applicant specifically. You want to give me language for another bullet point for active transportation plan improvements as agreed to by the, by the applicant? And I, and if so, maybe clarify what those were. I'll get that in as a bullet point.
I think that sounds reasonable.
That's a plan.
As long as that's acceptable to the board.
No comment within the pregnant pause. Elena, we're going on to G.
All right. So for, this one doesn't necessarily have to do with G, but I just wanted to potentially suggest that whether a specific condition should be added regarding the right of way dedication along Cedar Avenue and the right of way easement along River Road to Monmouth County, if that should be a condition within the resolution. Because I don't think it's mentioned anywhere. And even though it's a requirement of the settlement agreement, I think it wouldn't, it's shown on the plans. And I don't think it would hurt.
Yeah, especially if, usually the Borough is going to require right of way easement dedication. What's the terminology that we, we just had it on that one subdivision on Fish Street?
That should probably go into. Yeah, that really is more of a condition improvement. So maybe, maybe make it, make it an H.
And then the Monmouth County piece is normally captured under the Monmouth County Planning Board approval. That's like an outside agency. Do you agree, Elena, or?
Yeah, I think, I, I think that makes the most sense that put the.
County portion of it can go into FD.
Yeah, and theirs is only an easement. So it doesn't, it doesn't modify the calculations for the lot, where ours is actually a dedication. And we already covered that earlier in the resolution for a lot area. But I would recommend that we do add a condition specifying the right of way dedication to the Borough along the Cedar Avenue side. Similar to what we've done in the past, yeah.
And then part two of this comment is just whether or not we should add a general condition regarding compliance with the executed settlement agreements between M and M Realty and the Borough, both the original February 12th, 2020, and the amended April 12th, 2021.
And I recommend that that be taken back to Mike Edwards and ask that question. I think it obviously would be great as long as it's common. If it isn't common, then we can't, then, then we should.
Makes sense.
And then I think the only thing we had was who gets copied. We added.
No objection to those. It makes sense.
Yeah, those are all actual appointments.
Okay. That's super fun. Betsy, do you think that we are in a position to proceed with the vote tonight? Or do you think we should be seeing a revised marked up resolution based on these discussions and voting next month?
Well, I, I have to tell you, I, I've got like seven or eight different points that I've made note of that need to be reviewed and reworked into the resolution. And, and I believe it's going to take a great, it's going to take a leap of faith for me to agree to this. To agree to voting yes for this resolution without having seen what these changes are going to be. There's a couple that involve Mike Edwards. There's some language changes. I personally would prefer to see the latest revision or the final revision, hopefully, when we're done with this, before I vote on it.
Hey Betsy, can I just confirm? You said you had a list of seven things. Were those things that we just spoke of? Or were those other things that we have not spoken of?
These are all things that as we went through both, both the, as we went through the resolution twice, things that I made note of, changes that we're proposing.
Okay.
The resolution. But it's all been just everything, everything that I took note of has already been discussed.
Very good. Anybody else have any opinion that's different than Betsy's with regard to the proposal that we pushed this off a month? All right, Doug, any problems or objections with that idea?
I do not. You may want to hear from the applicant again. They're still there.
I, I, I don't, we've already asked and we understand that, that you would prefer to proceed today. Is there a panelist that has a hand up?
Yeah, I hit the wrong button. You're welcome, Todd.
Okay. Then I, I guess we don't, we don't need a motion. The, the idea is that we're going to table this then until the next meeting. As soon as possible, let's get this cleaned up and circulated to the people that it needs to be, including applicant's counsel. Once it's been through that process, then back to the board as a red line, I guess, if there's any changes outside of what we spoke about tonight, so people can track those changes.
And Elaine, can I, can I impose upon you, I, 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 my version is a red line and I do not have side comments. Can you send that to me in a, with the notations?
Yeah, I can probably PDF it out and send it to you.
That's perfect. That's perfect. I just want to make sure I have the, because while I see the red line as to the comments, there was just a little highlight and now I have them in context.
Gotcha. Yeah, sure. I can PDF it and email it to you the Thursday tomorrow morning.
That's wonderful.
So I have, I have a question on the applicant. You know, returning their comments, at least in this last round, sort of at the 11th hour, who knows, who knows why. Is there a way that we can sort of communicate that, you know, that, that we want the comments back at times of the essence or within a week or two or something so that next month, we're not in the same position again? If there are changes that we don't get them until, you know, an hour before the meeting? Does that make sense?
Well, for clarification, we didn't get the applicant's comments an hour before the meeting. We got those comments from the board professionals. The, the process of providing it to the applicant's counsel is courtesy. The board has the ability to do its own resolution. So, you know, we can hear those comments. We don't need to fight with the applicant's counsel. We can just adopt the resolution we want to. But I think Doug, the, the real question here is whether or not under these circumstances, we can do it at the front end of the month and make it clear that any proposed changes we'd like as soon as possible, because the board thought, thoughtfully went through this tonight for an hour and a half and wants to be sure that it gets a chance to see them.
And, and, and so you're clear. If I, we got our comments out, I want to say, I think I promised the 15th, I think we got them early out to them on the 16th. They, they turned them around. You know, it was just more people were touching this than, than normally happen. I, I don't have a reason to believe that the applicant's counsel is going to be illatory at all. And I, I think they'll recognize if they're still sitting in listening, that we want to get this thing turned around. And as the chair has already said, I do this as a courtesy. Because quite frankly, if there are issues, and some of them were very simple, you know, like road, like, you know, Borough Planner as opposed to Board Planner, you know, this is, I would say in my experience with this board, this is the first really detailed modification that we've had. And quite frankly, it warrants it in light of this, in light of this development. So I, I will certainly tell you that, but I, I think we're probably going to be preaching to the faithful. They're probably going to want to have it turned around anyway. And I certainly will do that.
Sandy, I see that Ms. Elgart has her hand up, and I think as a courtesy, we can hear from her if you can bring her forward.
Thank you. I think I'm logged in now, right?
Yes.
You can hear me? Okay. No, I just wanted to thank everybody for their comments. And thank you, Doug, for acknowledging, we did try to turn it around. We were not being sitting on it, so to say, and we were diligent. And I'm only saying that because I think we had a few days to turn it around. And I think that's exactly what we did. And we will do so again in the next go around. So thank you, everybody. That's all.
Thank you. All right, Fred, what's next?
So next item on the list is, on the agenda is Zilento Builders. I, I, are we, there's a resolution or a final resolution that we're going to, we're going to vote on? Is that?
Doug.
I didn't, I didn't see anything.
I have not prepared a resolution because I did not know where the board was on this at this point. If I can give you some background, maybe that will help. If I can do some direction and it requires a resolution, certainly there's going to be some documentation that I'm going to run with our engineer. But let me give you the, the background issue that, that came up from the applicant. The applicant, one of the conditions that we had with regard to this application was that they would prior to perfection of the subdivision, that they would demo the building. And not because this applicant has done anything incorrect, but sometimes if you don't make that a condition, sometimes the property gets subdivided, the building doesn't get demoed, maybe it gets sold, et cetera, et cetera. So we made that as a condition. Their counsel approached, I believe the engineer initially and said, you know, can we, can we change that? Can we change that in such a fashion that we will do that sort of after the fact? Because we're simply a contract purchaser and we really can't. And we really can't demo anything and we really don't want to take title till it's, till it's subdivided. So we're kind of chasing our tail. So what I had suggested and, and Rich picked up on this right away, saying, you know, I got some concerns. But the board may be exposed on here if we don't hold it to the condition. And what I suggested after speaking to Borough Council was that this applicant, just like we were talking about with posting performance guarantees. Posted performance guarantee in a value of getting the work done. They went out and got an estimate of eighteen thousand, ran that estimate past Rich if he was comfortable with it. He said, fine, I'm comfortable with that. Borough Council was comfortable with the process of having them post a performance guarantee. Went back to the applicant's council. They said they will post a cash, a cash dollar value in that amount. And then I touched base with your engineer again and said, well, what timing do you want, assuming they take title? How soon thereafter do you want it demoed? And I think, I think Rich said 90 days. So the agreement I struck, at least verbally conditioned upon board approval. Was that we waive that condition as it's presently writ, written. In lieu of posting of a cash guarantee of eighteen thousand, the amount of the improvement. And with the understanding that that property be demoed within 90 days of them taking title. They were acceptable to that. Borough Council was acceptable to that. I wanted to run that by board. And that's where we are. It would just be, okay, we'll take that condition. Everything else I would, I would draft a resolution. But to give them the go forward and just like any other improvements that you would take a performance bond for, or a post a guarantee for, they would be obliged to post that. And then we'd allow them to proceed.
Hey, Rich.
For some reason it didn't get done, we'd have to go and do the demo ourselves.
Rich, when we do bonds, are they typically, how, how do we set a price on the bond for, for improvements? Is it a hundred percent, ninety percent, a hundred and fifty percent?
Now, typical, well, it's based on the municipal land use law and the borough engineer, my, who is myself, I do a, I do an estimate based on the items that would be bondable or covered under that performance guarantee. I use current pricing, you know, for that estimate. And then you take the total and the, the amount is one hundred and twenty percent of the actual amount. So it adds essentially like a twenty percent contingency.
So look, so my comment on this, and I, just from my own personal experience, I don't know if anybody under the board members have any. You know, it used to cost twenty thousand dollars to take a house down, put it in a can five years ago. But everything in construction has gone up. I do see that they've got an estimate for eighteen, but if we really want to feel as though we could take it down based on the amount of the bond, I don't feel like eighteen's enough. I, I'm not trying to be difficult. I, I just, that doesn't strike me as the right number if we had to do it. I've not quoted prices, but I've done it a few times.
You're, you're out of, you're out of legal response. Now you're into the field of construction with what Rich feels comfortable with.
Yeah, I mean, from my standpoint.
Gets done and, and the applicant did want me to mention it. Once it gets done, he's going to want the money back either way.
Of course.
You know, so.
Yeah, Todd, I see your point and, and typically this is not an item that's covered under a performance guarantee. So things of this nature, we would rely on the applicant or the developer to seek a quote and provide it to us. If it was really low, we would have said, wait a minute, there, there's no way that this could be possible. You need to obtain a second quote. So in this case, it was eighteen thousand dollars and obviously there's a timeframe attached to this. But I understand your point. If there's some environmental concerns with asbestos or other things that may cost a little more money to dispose. You know, in that, in that existing home. I don't know the specifics on that.
Just, just to be real clear, I'm not questioning their estimate. I'm sure their estimates for them to do the work. I'm questioning if we called other companies out of the blue to do it, whether or not we would get the number. And whether or not we want to be at risk if we actually had to do it. That's, that's my point.
We, we do know, and I'm not trying to advocate one way or the other, we do know that this applicant has always been telling us how anxious they are to get things done.
It's not, and it doesn't become an issue unless they don't do it. So it's really a matter of security only.
Also to rec, recognize this is an estimate. Although it's a separate posting, in this case it's going to be a cash guarantee, we will have a performance guarantee as well attached to the subdivision. So the borough does have that additional bond that will be in place. As part of the conditions of this approval.
Could you go into that if you needed to, Rich, if it costs twenty five or thirty?
I don't see why not. It's, it's I, I mean. Once again, it's these, this is an estimate. It, it's a performance guarantee estimate. And the applicant is posting that money based on the estimate. And if, if it ever came to pulling that bond, we would have to go out and see quotes. And get the work done for whatever it's going to cost. And if that number is higher. That's the purpose of that bond to be in place. And, and that's another reason why, you know, not to get too complicated, but as work progresses on a site or a project, the developer has the right to ask for that bond to be reduced. But the municipal land use law says you can only reduce it down to a certain amount and that's to cover the borough. You know, in that event, that the pricing or the estimate is a little off and things of that nature. So we do have that protection.
All right. So Doug, so the question for the board is whether or not anybody has a concern or a problem with the idea of putting a bond in place for the amount of eighteen thousand and changing that condition so that the resolution can be put together and this can be put to bed, right?
I, I mean, what they're proposing is, is a cash, a cash value of eighteen thousand deposited in hand in the borough's account. Then they're going to go to get the work done within ninety days. I mean, I want to make sure that everybody knows that it's within ninety days of them taking title. We'll know whether or not that that house is down. So you have that guarantee. And what I would do is make a one-page modification that that condition of the timing of it is now been modified by the board to allow for that together, everything else stays in place. No other conditions that were, have been changed.
Does everybody understand the question? And does anybody have any comments with regard to the proposal?
Is the eighteen, is the eighteen thousand inclusive of the twenty percent markup?
No, in this case, it's just eighteen thousand.
We would add a twenty percent markup, right?
I think we were just going to go, we were, we were going based on the estimate of eighteen thousand.
Because the, the applicant, this is not usually something that would be a bondable. What we're explaining was usually when we'd have a bondable item, it's the amount plus twenty. This is not something that we.
This is not about, got it. Okay.
Yeah. He's proposing just to put the cash value up based upon the deposit, have it down ninety days within taking title of the property.
I just have a point of clarification. So if the property or something is not taken care of within ninety days. The borough would take that bond and then proceed with demolition? Or would the builder have additional time to, you know, work with the borough to come to some decision about what to do with that property?
I, I, I would say that at that point in time, we'd, we'd rely upon the recommendation of our engineer as to what circumstance arose to prevent them from doing it in ninety days. And we'd make a reasonable response at that point. The whole idea is not to have us to do it. And if, if there were some other circumstance, I you know, I would again consult with Borough Council. I consult with Borough Engineer. Take their recommendations, bring that back, just as I have in this instance. I mean, it's, it's going to be the borough that's going to be the entity that's going to execute onto the property and take the money. It's going to be sort of out of our jurisdiction at that point in time as to what we want to do.
And just so you know, the amount of the bondable items for the other work for this project is estimated at thirty six thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So the applicant will be posting that performance guarantee. As, which is typical with a subdivision.
And just to clarify for the board members, so the subdivision line is going to run right through the house. No one's probably thought about it. Because they proposed it as a vacant lot and a subdivision. It's not a vacant lot. It's got a house on it. So if you subdivide it, you're creating a non-conforming condition. So that's the reason you take the house down prior to perfecting the subdivision. And you usually use the perfection of the subdivision as your hammer to make sure that everything gets done that's supposed to get done. And so we've been asked to make an exception to what is a fairly standard condition. So that's the reason we're going through this, because they've asked us to do it differently than what you would typically do by default.
Thanks for that clarification, Todd.
Everybody okay? I don't see any strong objections out there. Anybody object proceeding in this manner?
Todd, I see the applicant's attorney raise his hand.
Can bring Rick forward.
Hi guys.
Greetings.
Hi, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I don't want to get in the way. I just wanted to, I, I just wanted to make it clear, and I appreciate the board's time on this, just wanted to make it clear that the basis. The reason we're asking for this is because we are indeed contract purchasers. And so, and we wanted to be, go forward and close on the property and simultaneously be able to perfect the subdivision. And we thought this was a way to ensure and give the, the borough comfort that we have both a time constraint and, and a monetary, and a monetary at risk. To ensure that within that defined timeframe, after we take title to the property, that house will be removed.
Thanks, Rod.
Sure.
Rich, can I ask you a question? The eight, the eighteen thousand dollars that you're putting in escrow. If once the Ovento Builders take the house down and we're not satisfied with the condition of the lot after it's been demolished, can we use some of that money to bring it to a standard or it can't be used for anything else?
So if the work was done by the builder and then for whatever reason, they never came back and it, and it, it was in a condition that didn't meet our standards, is that what you're getting at?
Yes.
That's where your we have that additional performance guarantee in place, which is part of the subdivision.
That thirty six thousand dollars?
Well, wait a minute. If they took, if they took the house down but didn't remove the foundation, they didn't complete the demolition. So you're only going to, you're only going to release the bond back to them when they have fully demolished the house and it's gone, Betsy.
And the work is acceptable. And, and a demolition requires a building permit. So the built, the, the, the construction office will also be on site. To sign off on the final work for demolition.
Thank you.
All right. Nothing further? All right, Doug, you got what you need?
Like a motion and a second to allow me to do that and enter that agreement, revise the resolution. And advise the applicant that his request to post a get bond, not, excuse me, post the cash money to be relieved of the condition as it's presently written.
Make the motion.
Second.
Second.
Um, is it the original folks that voted on the resolution?
It's those present now.
Okay. Mr. Waterlon?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Nicka?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
And Mr. Leader?
I'll stay. All right, Fred.
So next item, uh, next item on the list is the, is the review of the RFPs and so the, the committee, which was, was made up of myself, Sherry D'Angelo, Kelly Bush and Councilwoman Coach went over, went over the RFPs and, and drafted our, our, our findings. Through our review of those RFPs and and suggest now, I think that, that we as a, as a board have to, have to make a decision on on, on who to hire as, as attorney, planner and engineer for the planning board. And so we can start that discussion. Todd, I don't know if you have any comments to, to open that discussion or you'd like me to proceed with, with how we went about reviewing, reviewing the RFPs.
Well, I think I'd like to make a proposal that we have this discussion in closed session. If no, if there's no objection, I'll make a motion to go into closed session. And with regard to the closed session, there was a call in that was circulated by Sandy. That everyone should have in their inbox. And I'll give you a time of. Sandy's email was sent to two thirty-three this afternoon. Which says, just a reminder, the borough does not have a dial-in. Fantastic. Sorry, Sandy, guess I didn't get a chance to read this.
All right.
We do not have, so no one has a conference bridge, so I'm going to circulate mine is what I'm going to do. Let me just find the last. Sandy, I'm not seeing a good email with everybody from the planning board on it. I don't know why. Everything I have has got limited people on it, not the entire board. Sandy, do me a favor, please circulate to the entire board, no professionals, yourself included, an email. And I will circulate in response to that email, my call-in bridge. And I will go to set that up. With regard to what you're doing with your Zoom. Everybody should be logging off and then we'll have to log back on once we're done, reopen the meeting and close it for this evening. Everybody understand the plan?
Yes.
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 Sandy, you sending your email?
I am.
How Sandy or Todd, will we be notified when you guys come back?
We're going to come back on the record when we're done. So we can leave this open. We're going to sign off. So anybody, the, the public, as we always do with closed session can stay on.
Okay. I'll just turn my video off.
Yeah, Todd, is it okay? I mean, there's, there's no formality. Just turn off video and mute and just have the thing open, but then obviously jump on the calls. Is that, is that okay?
Yeah, just don't create the disastrous situation of not actually turning off your, I'm logged out, so I can't.
Gotcha. Fair enough.
I see Sandy's email now.
I haven't received it yet. I see it now. I'm sending the conference code.
Todd, is this going, is this going to Doug too? Because I didn't put him on the list if you're just replying to all.
No, it's not going to Doug too. And we did not do our motion. Everybody's already off, but we didn't do it yet. We got caught up on this. So I'm gonna do, I lose everybody. I did a terrible job of this.
I'm still here. I think there's people here.
Anybody that's still here, please get back on the, get back on your mic because I'm going to make a motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian's there. Koch is there. David's there. Great. We've got enough. Sandy, could you just go ahead and do a quick roll call, please?
Yep, Mr. Borderline?
Yes.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Koch?
Yes.
Mr. Paolo?
Yes.
Mr. Rolf?
Yes.
Mr. Nicka? Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo? Uh, Mr. Leader?
Yes. All right, I'll set up the conference bridge now and see y'all on the other side.
Fred, the last one. One, two, three.
I'm here.
Eight, nine, ten, we're good. Sandy, roll call please.
Mr. Borderline.
Here.
Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mrs. Koch.
Here.
Mr. Paolo.
Here.
Mr. Rolfe.
Here.
Mr. Nika.
Here.
Mr. Olson.
Here.
Mrs. D'Angelo.
Here.
Mr. Burkhardt.
Here.
And Mr. Leader.
Here. Okay, we're back from closed session. Does anyone want to make a motion with regard to the discussions that we had in closed session?
Yes, I'll make a motion. The first motion will be to appoint Doug Kovats as Kovats, Kenny and Gross as planning board attorney.
I'll second.
Roll call when you're ready, Sandy.
Mr. Borderline.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Koch.
Yes.
Mr. Paolo.
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe.
Yes.
Mr. Nika.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes. Any other motions?
Yes, the second motion will be to appoint Rich Gardella as the planning board attorney subject to his signing of a contract with the planning board consistent with the terms that the zoning board has offered its engineer.
A slight modification. I don't think he's qualified to be our attorney, but he can be our engineer.
And sorry.
And I think the contract would be negotiated along the lines of the contract that's been executed or that's being negotiated by the zoning board, but it would be subject to the board and Mr. Gardella's discussion.
Fair enough.
Agreed.
Mr. Borderline.
Yes.
Mrs. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Koch.
Yes.
Mr. Paolo.
Yes.
Mr. Rolfe.
Yes.
Mr. Nika.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo.
Yes.
And Mr. Leader.
Yes.
And the third resolution will, or do we need a resolution to defer, Todd, or do we just leave it silent?
No, no, I just think we need to clarify that a decision is not with regard to the planner and that we're going to defer that discussion until a later date.
Noted.
Okay. Anyone else have any further comments? Any board members? I see there's one member of the public. I'll open quickly for a public comment if any. Need to use your raise hand feature. Going twice. Okay. Any further business? Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks everybody for the hard work today.
Thank you. Night everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.